Okay. Welcome to the Planning Board meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2021. This announcement has been made, sorry Nora. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting can be accessed on the Parsippany website. Please look for links there as we continue to have these meetings virtually for the for the time being. With that said, Nora, would you please call the roll for tonight?
Councilman D. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Dedik.
Yeah.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Fergieri.
Here.
I know Ms. Hernandez is going to recuse herself. I don't know if she is here. Mr. Mandel.
I don't see her.
Mr. Veely.
Yeah.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Ms. Veely. She's having some trouble getting on. Mr. Chairman Von Aken.
Yes, here.
We also have with us our Board Planner, Ms. Fafate, our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Okay, very good. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we start get started with the items on the agenda, there is one matter I'd just like to bring up ahead of time. I have authorized Steve Mandel to start a work group with up to two other board members regarding EV parking and to in alignment with our goals on the master plan. He'll be starting a work group and leading that group, the goal of which would be to present to the board information which would be useful to establishing an ordinance on EV parking. Mr. Mandel, is there anything you'd like to say?
Other than, you know, this was stated in the master plan that the township was looking forward to increasing the number of EV spots. I'm looking for volunteers.
And I would like to keep that to two other members of the board, so three members altogether, so that we're not creating a quorum of any kind. And you'll also be able to invite other members from the community and experts to support you in your in your goals.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the agenda items, we have a resolution application number 20:522. Have all of the board members have an opportunity to read the resolution? Is everybody satisfied with and prepared to make a motion on this?
May I have a question answered first?
Please do, Mr. Mandel.
On page three, item five, the plan shall be revised to reflect the planning, a planting plan that's acceptable to the Board Planner, et cetera, et cetera. That covers the neighbor in the rear of the place. Am I correct?
That's that's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that we did cover that aspect.
Yeah, you got that. And that's, I think, the underlying end of that condition, in fact.
We don't have to state the reason for that or anything.
No, certainly not. And our Board Planner is more than aware of what we're trying to accomplish there.
Okay. I'll also move then.
And I'll second. Dinsmore.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the resolution as given. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Councilman D. Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez is not with us tonight. Mr. Mandel.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes.
I just want to note for the record that Ms. Veely is with us tonight.
Nora, I don't get the vote.
Excellent.
Who are we talking, Tom?
I think you were refused on this one.
I think.
Was I?
Yes, you were refused because this was presented by Mr. Malman.
Dave Pitney.
I should second it. I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Paid attention to it, but didn't pay attention to that.
Mr. Chairman, before we get on with business, can I just can I just report on something real quick, really quickly?
Yes, please do.
Sure, just wanted to let you know that Ms. Hernandez was in touch with me earlier today. As you know, she's got a conflict with the application we'll be hearing first tonight. She has the same conflict with the property that will be heard after that. And so she'll need to recuse for the same reason. She did ask me if she should attend. I told her no, I would deliver that message on her behalf and she could save herself a trouble.
I think that's fine. Thank you for doing so. All right, and Nora, I think you said so, but just let the record show that Ms. Veely has joined us as well. Excellent. All right, and with that said, let's move on to.
Before we move on, Mr. Dinsmore seconded that motion for 2522, and he had recused himself from the application.
So we need to redo the motion and get another second?
We, I guess, Mandel made a motion. I need a second.
We need. All right, very good. Bruce Fergieri seconds. And let's go ahead and do the roll call again.
D. Piero.
Yes.
Fergieri.
Yes.
Mandel.
Yes.
Von Aken.
Yes.
Okay. All right, now that all of those matters have taken care of, I believe we're prepared to present the second half of application number 20:516 to Campus Road LLC. Is the attorney for the applicant present?
Yes, Chairman, Stephen Tom Bellacan, we're in a work group on behalf of the applicant.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Tom Bellacan. I believe that we left you off with your architect, completing your architect last time, right?
That's correct. At the first.
All right, so we've heard from your.
Yeah, on the first day on January 11th, you heard from our site engineer, Patty Ruskin, our landscape architect, Tom Carman, as well as our building architect, Chris LaSord. Tonight, you'll be hearing from Craig Paraguay, who is our traffic engineer, and following him would be Tom Golden, Tom Golden, who will be providing the planning proofs for the application. And then, once the variance proofs are in, I would like to recall Patty Ruskin to provide further elaboration into the stormwater design. Because it's a rather complicated system, and there were some questions raised that I don't believe were fully answered. And so we're going to ask Patty to come back and give a little bit more questions that went into it and those types of things. But before I go further, Chairman, I do have to fess up that I made a mistake at the prior hearing, and I need to apologize to the board. Councilman D. Piero asked a very good question about the status of negotiations and the proposed disposition of the property at the corner of Littleton, 1633 Littleton Road. And at the time I answered it, I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't really aware of all the facts. Here's what happened. The township, and let me just make this clearly, the township is very interested in acquiring 1633 to turn it into a park. They are very interested in that. What happened was, we had really lengthy and detailed negotiations that then were kind of put on hold. And the reason they were put on hold, it's no surprise to anybody, was COVID. I mean, the town council had bigger fish to fry and many issues to deal with. So this particular issue wasn't among the most crucial to deal with while the world was falling apart. Now that the world is kind of coming back together again, people are focusing, I can represent that we've had many calls and conferences with the township, and that's it's back on track, and those are progressing very nicely. So I want to apologize if I misled the board. I really apologize. It wasn't my intention. The town, I can confirm, is very interested in acquiring 1633, turning it into a park eventually. So thank you for allowing me to clear that up.
I appreciate you clearing the record. I would say, Mr. Tom Bellacan, your audio is a little bit spotty at times. I may have to ask you to repeat things occasionally so that we can make sure we get things on the record.
All right, maybe I'll just speak louder into the cheap mic I have. Also, I don't know if Tom Golden is connected via video, but he's having problems with his microphone. So when it's his turn to testify, he also is dialing in on a separate telephone line, so his voice will be heard. But we'll deal with that when it's Tom's turn to testify.
Okay. Earl, are you capable of managing through that as we move forward?
Yeah, I believe so. I have a calling person on right now.
Okay, excellent. Is that Mr. Golden?
It's call in number seven. There's no name associated with it.
Oh, I see that. Okay, yeah, on the attendees list. Okay, well, I guess we'll we'll see what happens when we get to Mr. Golden. Mr. Tom Bellacan, I will turn over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, my first witness tonight, again, who is the fourth witness in total for the application, is Mr. Craig Paraguay, professional engineer from Dynamic Traffic.
I'm here.
Now, Craig, you recall that you were previously sworn two weeks ago at the hearing?
Yes.
And you acknowledge that you remain under oath this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Craig, to the extent that the board is not familiar with the work, can you give the board a brief background of your education and qualifications?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey. I've been working as a traffic engineer for over 20 years now, and I testify pretty much on a nightly basis. And lately, like this, on video conferencing. And I've appeared in Parsippany a number of times. This board and the Reserving Board.
Given those qualifications, we would ask the board to consider Mr. Paraguay as an expert in traffic engineering?
Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Paraguay? Okay, then this witness is acceptable. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, Craig, you've done an analysis of the proposed development with respect to the regional road network, the local road network. Can you give the board an overview of your findings?
Sure, as Mr. Tom Bellacan said, we did a traffic impact study. We actually have a pretty large study area because we had initially looked at this associated with the redevelopment aspect of it. So we looked at a broader scope than you typically would for a project of this size. And what we did was take traffic counts. Unfortunately, we, as I said, we worked on it during the redevelopment. We took these in October of 2018, so we have good pre-COVID data. Obviously, traffic volumes are not what they were. And what we did was look at five intersections, actually, in this case. We looked at Littleton Road intersections with Sylvan Way, Campus Drive, Route 10. We also looked at Dryden Way and Campus Drive and Dryden Way and Sylvan Way. Again, that's a pretty big comprehensive study area for a project of this scope because of the nature of what we were originally doing this for. And we took counts of those intersections between 7:00 and 9:00 on a weekday morning and between 4:30 and 6:30 on a weekday evening. That's the busiest time periods, the more rush hour time periods where the roadway is the busiest and residential development will be at its busiest. And again, those volumes came from 2018. So to sort of get those to what existing or what would be existing volumes, have we not had the pandemic occur? We increased those by the New Jersey DOT prescribed growth rate for this area, which is 1%. So we increased them by 1% for two years to get what is now the representative 2020 volumes, what we normally would have expected to see at this time of year. From that point, what we need to do is sort of predict the future in terms of traffic impacts. So we wanted to go to a build out year of 2022, so we add another 1% on top of that, on top of those 2020 volumes for two years. We also added the traffic volumes from the Capital Grill, the Seasons 52 restaurants that are under construction currently. There was 47,000 square feet of space adjacent to the Wegmans that wasn't there in 2018. We've added that traffic volume. And we also added, what's the subject of the next application, the Three Campus Project. Typically, we wouldn't include an unapproved project in the future conditions, but we know it's coming around the same time as this, so we did actually include that. Your planner, actually, in their report, mentions a few other projects that are being considered in the area in various stages of approval. And they're all sort of similar to this, where we're redeveloping a former office building. And what that does, and it's the same case here, is it sort of changes the nature of the traffic in the area. You had historically, this campus was an office campus, where everybody's arriving in the morning and leaving in the evening. Now you're starting to see some of that changeover as the office market isn't what it used to be. And the residential traffic is going to sort of be the reverse to that. So what that does is actually help traffic conditions to a certain extent by sort of diversifying the directionality of where people are going. That bears out in this project. Beyond that, we also see less traffic generally from a residential development. People work at all different places. They leave at all different times and come back at all different times, whereas office, you tend to get a spike of people coming in the morning and a spike of people leaving in the evening. So the residential hour, peak hour demand is a little bit less. And in this case, for the proposed project, we use the ITE or the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual in order to project the traffic volumes that will be generated by this project. And what that tells me is for a project of this size, 172 units, we would generate 58 trips in the morning peak hour and 75 trips in the evening peak hour. Now, that's the one busiest hour in the morning and the one busiest hour in the evening. If you compare that to the office space that's on the site now that we're getting rid of, that office space would have generated 109 more trips in the morning and 92 more trips in the evening. So we're reducing by a substantial amount that peak hour trip generation. And as I mentioned before, sort of changing the directionality of it. That traffic volume, I've added to those grown 2022 traffic volumes without any credit for that office. I'm assuming that we're building this on vacant land, looking at an absolute worst case scenario, when realistically, we're reducing the trip generation potential. But again, I'm assuming that that wasn't there. So we have two scenarios. We have the future scenario without this development and the future scenario with this development. And all those intersections that I studied, I prepare a capacity analysis of. And that's essentially, it's a computer software that we use based on the traffic volumes, turning movement volumes, signal timing, stop control, whatever, whatever it may be. It projects for us the, or calculates for us, the average delay per vehicle, which is then related to a level of service, A being the least delay or the best, F being the worst delay or failing condition or the highest amount of delay. And then I take a comparison of what's traffic like in the future without our project and what's traffic like with our project. As expected, based on the low trip generation, we don't have too much of an impact on the levels of service. It's a lot of intersections, you know, I won't go through each individual one and bore everybody, but we don't have too much impact. But what we did do was take a look at those three signals along Littleton. Because again, you're changing the nature of the traffic volumes a little bit. And we did try to optimize those based on the traffic signal timing. And we did find that shifting a few seconds of signal timing around can actually make those intersections work better and be improved. Now, two of those are county, the Littleton, that Littleton Road right there is on a jurisdiction of Morris County. And Route 10 and 202 is obviously DOT jurisdiction. So in order to actually implement any of those timing changes, those agencies would have to agree to it. I suspect, given that the traffic volumes are much lower now, they're going to be a little more patient and say, let's wait and see if they redevelop to what they were. But I think the point is, we can improve conditions to a certain extent with this project by only changing the signal timing. So that's a very small impact. There's no, this does not generate the need for any additional lanes widening or anything crazy. It's just, just the signal timing is enough to mitigate the traffic impact from this. And again, realistically, I could have added the office traffic that would have been generated by this site to that non-developed scenario, and we probably have better levels of service. But I wanted to take a look at a realistic worst case scenario projection. So again, no credit for what was there. But we are reducing the traffic generation potential of this property by removing the office and switching to residential. The last component of my traffic impact study is looking at the site circulation. That was discussed in pretty great detail, I think, at the last, the last meeting. So I won't go into too much of that unless anybody wants to do it. But the key thing here, I think, is that shared parking that we have, which works perfectly because office, again, is at its busiest and has its peak demand in the middle of the day when the residential is the lowest. So being able to take advantage of that, I think, makes a lot of sense. And I think the parking that's provided on our site, even without that shared offsite parking, would be sufficient for a typical day for a development of this nature. And again, the onsite circulation, we discussed pretty thoroughly at the last meeting, so unless there's any questions, I won't revisit all of that. That's really good.
Thank you, Craig. Unless the board has any questions for Craig, I have no further questions for him.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Bellacan. Ms. Fafate, do you have any questions for the traffic witness?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I would defer to Mr. Canjiano on.
All right. And we'll defer to him right now, Mr. Canjiano.
Yeah. Could you just give additional testimony before any questions on the site circulation? We had talked about loading conditions in the rear, garbage truck circulation, traffic patterns. We really didn't get into any of that with the site engineer. As well, last hearing, the discussion on deliveries, parcel trucks, Amazon, UPS, FedEx and the like, Uber, DoorDash and all the like, all the deliveries, it was testified they'd be coming in the front. Can you give us testimony on site circulation for the deliveries and for the loading of and the circulation of a garbage truck?
Yeah, and certainly heard the discussion the last time. I mean, typically, at a building like this, a delivery vehicle, you know, they pull up behind some parking spaces, they're in and out. We did take a look at the potential for adding a more striped actual loading area that would accommodate the UPS truck, the FedEx truck, and then, you know, at nighttime, when you have the pizza delivery guy, he could use that as well. I think we have a solution. I'm not sure if we have that prepared as an exhibit at this point, but we do have the ability to provide a loading area for that type of use. Site engineer probably is the best to show, you know, show the specifics, but certainly heard what the board said and understand that since we have the opportunity, we have ample parking, it does make sense to provide a designated area for that activity rather than the traditional, you know, the guy pulls up behind the parking spaces and blocks the drive aisle temporarily. So we're able to do that.
Mr. Canjiano, Mr. Ruskin will be testifying later. Should be prepared to address that and provide further detail.
Okay, all right. So as far as my question, it goes more to, and this was an earlier question, I just wanted to confirm jurisdiction for the signals on, I guess, the five signals, the two, you know, Sylvan and Campus, the jurisdiction of the 202 Littleton, whose jurisdiction that is, is that full county jurisdiction, both for the roadway and the signals, the Campus and Sylvan signal?
Yeah, the Campus, the 202 Littleton signals are county, the Campus and Sylvan ones, that's 202 is a county jurisdiction there, even though it's got a state highway number. Route 10 and 202 is NJDOT jurisdiction. And then the other two, the internal signals are municipal or local jurisdiction, as far as I know. And those two operate perfectly fine. There's no need for any improvements there.
And I noted that you had said that maybe a slight signal timing would be a benefit overall once these projects are implemented. For the board's consideration, I would suggest that this be one of the discussions that the applicant has with Morris County as part of their submission and review to see if they have any, you know, the county transportation or traffic department has any opinion if the timing should be, you know, retimed as part of this application or some future date. But at a minimum, to identify to them that, you know, maybe timing, timing may be a consideration for them. It may not be on their radar. And, you know, should probably bring up at least the Three Campus Drive application at a minimum at the other, you know, because that is, like you had mentioned, your traffic report includes Three Campus Drive.
It does, and we will have that discussion with the county. We're happy to work with them to do. Like I said, I think they might be a little reluctant right now because traffic volumes, you know, we don't know when they're going to be back what they were. Clearly, now there's not nearly the issues that there were prior to the campaign. So I'm not sure how that'll go into place, but we'll work with the county. It's up to them.
All right. Carlson, can you please make sure that's in the resolution?
I was muted. Yes, I'm working on that now.
I could also add, a Morris County Planning Board application was filed last week. So it's, but we will be certain to point out that issue to the county if it, in fact, wasn't on their radar.
Is this limited only to the intersection under county jurisdiction or also the state?
Well, my thought on that, they'd have to have a separate discussion with the state unless that's not the case. And I don't know that, it may be a heavier lift without, you know, having, you know, I don't know that it's at this point, considering that the, it's a nominal change in trips, that it makes sense to try and have the discussion with the state where they don't, they're not under state purview by the application. They are under the county jurisdiction.
Understood.
And Mr. Carlson, there are two lights which are under the county jurisdiction, that would be 202 and Sylvan, as well as the second intersection is 202 and Campus.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I lied, but if Mr. Canjiano is finished, I do have one little thing. Um, so I just want to make the applicant aware that they're going to be, as part of the Stanbury development down the road from you on Route 10, that developer has committed to participating and/or funding a study of a private shuttle service which would take its residents to the Morris Plains train station. And I think what's being contemplated is that that would include potentially a white curt development on Johnson Road, the two MacCallie developments, as well as Signature Place in Morris Plains, but on Johnson Road. The idea being that, you know, these are all multifamily developments that are in close proximity. You could conceive of a loop, take their residents, you know, to the train station. And so I just wanted to put that out there and suggest that, you know, this applicant should probably participate in that study. I think it only would help you. I just wanted to put it on the record. And the same is true of the second MacCallie when we get to that.
Thank you, Susan. No, that's a very good point. I believe one of our ownership partners, who, the entity that purchased a bunch of MacCallie assets on that campus is participating in that study, but we'll look into it further, of course.
Okay. Ms. Fafate, any other comments or questions? All right. Do any members of the board have any questions for the traffic witness?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Tahish.
Yeah, so I think, Mr. Craig, very good presentation about the traffic pattern and everything. What I'm not clear about is whether the current traffic pattern, again, 2018 numbers, is already overloading 202. And again, I'm just talking from experience, numbers really don't, sometimes don't justify that. If you go through the, go during the peak hours, 202 is usually backed up from Park Street or Park Road to West Side. So again, numbers may, or maybe adding up 1% and all that, that sounds great from a, you know, extrapolation perspective. But it doesn't really say that, you know, the current traffic already is overloading 202. Have we looked into that part and how do we address that?
Yeah, and I agree. I know 202 can be a slog in the evenings and certainly didn't help at the World's Most Yeah, a, and I agree. I know 202 can be a slog in the evenings and certainly didn't help that the world's most popular Chick-fil-A was built in the other corner of that intersection. But what I'm doing is comparing what it's going to be like with and without our development. So yes, are those conditions going to remain? To an extent, some of that signal timing optimization that we're proposing, I think, is going to help that a little bit. But it's, we're certainly not going to see that go away. We're just saying that this project isn't going to make that much worse, make that any more detrimental. And like I said, if anything, by getting rid of that potential office being occupied and generating more traffic, we're going to help the situation. And the more that you see, I mean, you don't want every single office to switch over to residential, because then you lose that diversity. But as you see some of this heavy office space start to switch to different uses, it's going to alleviate that a little bit because you don't have everybody trying to go to the same place in the same direction. You're gonna, you're gonna manipulate the traffic volumes. I think that's going to help a little bit. And people will get tired of Chick-fil-A eventually.
Mr. Tahish, anything else?
Yeah, no, I, I think I'm okay with that, that response. But again, I think I'm still in general, in general, concerned about the 202 loading up. So yeah, maybe something we gotta look at.
Any other board members like to ask a question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mandel.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you Craig. I don't want to mispronounce your last name.
It's fine.
Route 10, which I'm familiar with, I don't do too much of 202, but I do 10. 10:00 in the morning heading eastbound, which was not due to office park, is impossible. Route 10 heading westbound in the evening, which again was not due to the office traffic, is also impossible. So that Route 10, 202 intersection, that in my mind is the major issue. And while your project is small, the following one this evening is small. 1515 is small, the Johnson Road, all of those are compact into that same area. And I realize it's under state DOT, but there has to be some way to try and alleviate that whole situation of Route 10 being backed up for miles actually in the daytime going east, in the nighttime going west.
Yeah, a, and I agree. As you were saying that, I was just taking a look at the traffic volume, going east, it's, it's about 3,000 vehicles per hour. And then in the other direction, it's 15, it's 1,400, so it's less than half. So that's what I mean about that directionality of traffic, everybody heading in one direction versus the other. Route 10 isn't going to change as substantially as maybe 202 will be by, by these projects, because you're not going to have as much of an impact. But again, removing that office traffic is going to incrementally help that, not hurt that situation. The, the difference with this project or, or the other project, which obviously I included in this analysis along with 10, would not really be noticeable. And that's really what my job is, this applicant's job is. Understandably, it's a region-wide issue that at some point, you know, may change. But these sort of things incrementally help that situation. Changing the directionality a little bit from what you predominantly have and reducing the potential. This generates less traffic than the office would.
Well.
But it's, it's a small help.
No, no, it generates less traffic, but at different times. The, if, if I'm correct, the occupants of these new projects will be commuting to work more than likely, getting onto 202 to get onto Route 10 heading eastbound, which was not the pattern when they were office buildings, they were coming westbound to go to these offices. And the same thing in the evening. I mean, so yes, I understand what you're saying, that the total number of cars is going to be less, but it's going to be picking up where the load is currently. It's going to increase that load once we're out of COVID. And by the way, right now, during COVID, 202 and 10 is still a hassle.
Mr. Mandel.
Just because of Chick-fil-A.
Mr. Mandel, I'd like to ask Craig to describe, I mean, assuming that the Littleton Road intersection is backballed. I'd like Mr. Parag to describe the alternative means for vehicles from this development to access Route 10 using the Dryden Way approach. Effectively turning left out of the driveway and going down Campus to Dryden and then using that, that, the ramp system. That can't be overlooked, but that is a way of avoiding Littleton altogether.
Which is a good point.
And that's what I was going to say, yeah. That was going to be my response is that these people living here are, you know, you, you know how to avoid the traffic around your house. They're going to understand how to avoid that traffic and they have an opportunity because of the, the, the good roadway network within the campus. They can also head north on 202. You're going to disperse as you get away from here. And having that opportunity to get on Dryden keeps them out of that 10 and 202 intersection. I know if I lived here, I would avoid that intersection and Dryden Way would be my interchange. And then you're right there at 287, you've got one signal.
Dryden Way is certainly much better than trying to take 202 north from there.
Yeah.
All right. Any other board members would like to ask a question?
Okay, I, I have one or two myself. I'd just like to ask, you, you mentioned the grading system that you, you have for the property. What was the grade for the service level that, that was given to, to the two-campus drive project?
The, the driveway itself, which is, I think, the most important thing that we're looking at, is at a level of service B in the morning and, and C in the evening. So that's, that's a good thing.
All right. And, and how many, how many spaces do you expect to queue onto the, onto the drive-in driveway as you leave the property?
Now, the calculation, we, it, we are able to calculate what's called the 95th percentile queue, meaning 95% of the time the queue will be less. And the calculation comes out to less than one, it's 0.45 or something like that. So you're rarely going to see more than one car there. Almost two people just happen to leave at the same time. Very little queuing there. We have that median that allows you to, to make that turn a lot easier.
Yeah. Did you happen to have the grade for the, the Campus and 202 intersection?
Yep, I'm good to, sorry, I've got a big chart, so I can. Campus and Littleton, it is level of service D in both the morning and the evening, overall level of service D. Some movements that are E and some that are A, but the average overall is a D.
All right. And Dryden Way?
Dryden Way and Campus is a C, a B in the morning and a C in the evening, and is both with or without our project.
So even as those queues develop on those, at those intersections, the queue for this property, I'm thinking of an additive effect that, since you are so close to the, to the Campus and Littleton intersection, that cars that might be looking to leave your property would not be able to leave because of the queue from going towards 202. Has your, has your math accounted for that?
Yes, it does. When, when we run this, it's a full model of the intersections. So if there's any queue blocking, which I don't, I, I don't believe there is, it would be accounted for in that analysis.
Thank you for the terminology there, too. I'll have that for the next time. Let's see. I think that's all I have. Any other board members? Last chance before we turn it over to Mr. Tom Balakian again. All right, Mr. Tom Balakian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much, Craig. Appreciate your testimony tonight. And now I would ask that Tom Golden, if he's on the phone, if he can be elevated, so, so Tom can be qualified and then give us his planning testimony.
He's the call-in person?
I believe so, yes. He, he's also simply on video. But he, the voice part, he's having problems with his microphone, so he wanted to at least give the audio part on his telephone.
All right.
I'm going to unmute caller number seven. Just determine immediately if it's the right person.
Tom, can you hear us? Is that Tom Golden?
This is Steve Smith. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you speak up? You're very faint, Tom.
Okay, is that better?
Okay, great. Now, Tom, do you need to share a screen?
No.
Okay, so, okay, Tom. So if you can, speak as loudly as you can, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Now, Tom, you were previously sworn at, on the hearing that began on the 11th. Do you acknowledge you remain under oath this evening?
I do.
Okay. Can you please give the board the benefit of your educational background and planning experience so we can qualify you as a professional planner?
I have a bachelor's degree in geography from Clark University in Worcester, Massachusetts. I have, I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm also a member of the American Planning Association. I have over 30 years' experience in real estate planning and development. I've testified throughout New Jersey. My most recent testimony in front of Parsippany was on the Seven Sylvan Eight Campus property, which was, oh, I guess, a year or two ago, as well as the last one in front of the planning board, excuse me, in front of the zoning board, was for Centenary College at Seven Campus. So I've had experience in front of both the zoning and planning board in Parsippany, as well as throughout the state.
Mr. Tom Balakian, it's Scott Pearlson. Let me just interrupt for one moment, just jog my memory. This, this witness and all your witnesses were, were sworn at the last meeting, correct?
Correct, but not qualified. Correct.
Yeah.
Now, just for, for the record, Tom, you are a Vice President of MacCallie Realty Corporation?
I think I'm, one, one other thing that I did mention, Mr. Chairman, I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. My license is still current.
Okay. So we would ask that Mr. Golden be accepted as an expert in, in planning. But we do want to at least add the caveat that Mr. Golden is employed by the owner of the property, MacCallie Realty Corporation.
Okay, understood. Do any members of the planning board have questions about the qualifications, qualifications of Mr. Golden as a planner? All right, please proceed. Witness is acceptable.
Thank you, Chairman. Now, Tom, since this is a permitted use, can you just give the board a rundown, the, the reliefs by way of variance that the applicant is seeking in this application? And then provide your proofs and supportive testimony as to each variance?
Sure. There are two, three variances and a de minimis exception. The one variance is for impervious coverage. The ordinance allows 70%. The proposal is for 72.7%. The second variance is for parking that does not provide a side yard setback for 13 spaces at the southeast corner of the property. And the third is, which was mentioned at the last hearing, is that the retaining wall in the basin exceeds the allowable height. And then the de minimis exception is that we do not provide sidewalks on both sides of the driveway coming into the property. So I'll go through each of them separately. The impervious coverage variance, we're seeking a variance of 72.7% versus 70 that's allowed. The reason for that is the amenities that we're providing in this property are quite extensive. And most of them requiring impervious surface. The pool, the vodka court, the patios, the fireplace, the barbecue, the wood decking, the fire pit, all of those which will allow the residents to enjoy the space are impervious surfaces. This again is a five-acre site, which was mandated in the fair share plan to accommodate 172 units. So to provide the units, the parking per RSIS and the amenities, we exceed the 72.7% impervious coverage. We've been as efficient as we can with the parking. We had in the plan three excess spaces. And as the engineer mentioned at the last meeting, those, three of those spaces will be eliminated to comply with the Fire Department and the Fire Chief's requirements for access to the courtyard and to the Fire Department connection. So we lose those spaces, so we're right at the RSIS standard for parking. So, you know, we, we're as efficient as we can. It's not like we provided any excess parking. We really don't want to lose any of the amenities in the property to, you know, replace that with a porous surface that would really be a detriment to the amenity package for the benefit of the residents. So all in all, we can't really eliminate any real impervious surfaces without providing a detriment to the amenities package here. I do want to mention, Mr. Chairman, at the, at the last hearing, the board, there were board members that had questions regarding the patios for the COA units. And that the board had indicated a preference, I believe, that those patios be provided for those COA units. So if in fact we do provide them at the board, because the board so desires it, that impervious coverage would tick up a bit to about 73%, not the 72.7. But again, it's the same idea that the amenities that we're looking to provide, especially for those extra four units for the COA units, we believe the benefits would clearly outweigh the detriments for that. On the side yard setback variance, this relates to where there's shared parking. Where we have this shared park between two campus and four campus, you don't need to provide a side yard setback on the property. We in fact have a side yard on the four campus property, which serves the intent of that. So that between the parking on four campus and the parking on two campus, there's a buffer, a landscape buffer that, you know, trees and shrubs, et cetera, that serve the same purpose as if the, the buffer was on our site. Because we, we continued that row of parking out towards the street, there were 13 spaces that technically are not used for shared parking. So technically, they should have a setback from the property line. The reason we left it as is, and we believe that's a more beneficial design, is that it's impossible to do that without compromising aisle width or the driveway alignment. You know, the, given that we have a buffer of 21 feet at least on four campus drive, it serves the purpose of the buffer without having to redesign those, those last 13 spaces. Also understand that per the ordinance, we're allowed to do shared parking of up to 0.6 spaces per unit, which would be 102 spaces. We're only doing 45, less than 50% of the spaces to be shared. So we believe that the design here serves its purpose in terms of circulation and buffering at the expense of not having the buffer on the two-campus property. The third variance is the height of the retaining wall in the basin. As we talked about, the engineer talked about the last time, most of that wall, it's actually below grade, below the adjacent grade. So that we've reduced its visual impact as opposed to a wall that stands above grade where you see the whole wall. Without the ability to have those retaining walls of that height in the basin, you would probably have to make the basin a bit deeper, a bit steeper and a bit wider, all of which would expand the footprint of development, which we believe is a less desirable alternative than having the height of the walls in the basin, allowing us to provide for a full stormwater compliance with the stormwater rules and regulations. The de minimis exception, and I've gone through this with Mr. Canjiano, and we, we discussed this a bit. The, the RSI has typically talked about having sidewalks on both sides of a street. Also, we understand, according to Mr. Canjiano, and he can explain this a little bit more if need be, that DCA, Department of City Affairs considers these private driveways to be similar. We don't provide a sidewalk on the perimeter of the property. We provide sidewalks around the building and from the building to two-campus drive to the bus stop. But we don't provide a sidewalk on the other side of that driveway to be either on the 1633 property or at the rear or on four campus, because it's not really necessary. It serves no real purpose. because it's not really necessary. It serves no real purpose, because there is no, there's no occupants or tenants that would use it. It would be a redundant sort of design with no real purpose that it would serve. So we believe that you would be, we would be entitled to an RSIS exemption, because otherwise, you're talking about providing a basically non-functional and a cost generative side improvement that really won't do anything to serve the public health and safety. It would obviously add to impervious coverage, which we've been trying to minimize since we're already exceeding the allowable, and it would also impact some of the planned landscaping. So that's the general idea behind the three variances. What it would like to do is provide our brief testimony on how we satisfy both the positive and the negative criteria that would warrant the granting of those, excuse me, granting the warranting of those variances. Under the positive criteria, we're looking at that this application satisfies forty fifty-five D dash two, item A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development, C, to provide adequate air light and open space, G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses, I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements, and M, to coordinate, encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development. The negative criteria, excuse me. Regarding the negative criteria, our variance is satisfying a number of the master plan goals and policies. Goal number two in the master plan, this is under master plan section one point two, goals and policies. Goal number two is to provide a variety of housing types, densities, and a balanced housing supply in appropriate locations to serve township residents. This project affirmatively addresses Parsippany Troy Hills Low and Moderate Income Housing Obligation as expressed in the housing element in the fair share plan. It's directed towards an established center of development in close proximity to transit and business corridors, and is planned to mitigate potential impact on established neighborhoods and infrastructure. We also believe that this project satisfies goal number five under master plan one point two, in that it preserves and enhances the township's commercial and professional office areas by implementing land use strategy. Sorry?
Could you repeat?
To respond to modern market and real estate trends. This project is a creative alternative that reuses and repurposes the existing building stock. The improvements will make the business campus more viable and competitive in the marketplace, and the township master plan recognizes that upgrades to commercial areas may include the introduction of compatible new uses. One last master plan strategy and recommendation in section three point two under economic development. We satisfy the strategy about encouraging redevelopment and infill development in existing commercial and office areas that are in need of reinvestment. The project is consistent with development that prioritizes walkable mixed-use, excuse me, viable mixed-use neighborhoods with access to transit. The entire camp becomes more attractive through the introduction of multifamily residential. And the township, again, in the master plan, should support development patterns that will enhance the quality of life for both residents and employees in Parsippany while responding to the market demand for modern uses. Lastly, this project has no substantial impact to the zone plan. The number of units are consistent with the ordinance and with the township's fair share plan. The property is flanked by properties owned by the applicant or through which we have easement that would allow us to provide the development. There are no single-family homes that abut the site, nor are there any sensitive or low-intensity uses in the near vicinity. The site plan far exceeds many minimum zoning standards and falls far below many maximum standards. The parcel meets the minimum lot requirement. Setbacks, building coverage is low, twenty-two point seven versus thirty permitted. We meet the building height. The variances are modest in scope. So overall, we believe that with so many zoning standards are met, it is impossible to conclude that there is substantial detriment or any substantial impairment of any kind. That is the extent of my testimony, Chairman and the board.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. I have no questions for Mr. Golden.
All right. Ms. Vivate, any questions?
No, the only one I had, I think Mr. Golden answered, was confirming what the impact of the patios would be, adding those in. And I think you testified that it would raise the requested impervious to seventy-three percent. A slight increase, a slight increase in the required variance.
And along the lines of that, Ms. Vivate, I believe that in order to ensure that COA units are indistinguishable or public units, that would be a requirement.
Yeah, I would confirm, Mr. Chairman. I think that that was an important point raised at the last meeting and is an important part of, you know, upholding the spirit of that requirement.
Yep. So I believe we will have to make sure that that's a part of the resolution. All right. Mr. Cangiano, any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Frigieri, I think I saw you looking to ask questions.
It's a tough moment. But I reference to the amenity in the bocce ball court. They bocce play on grass or sand, and most bocce ball courts are surrounded by grass and might mitigate having to put patios in. Perhaps maybe just one patio or maybe two, I don't know, if the area court was sand or grassed, that quote.
Tom, are you able to answer that question?
Steve, maybe Tom Carmen can address the issue about the bocce court?
Yes. You know, after Mr. Golden finishes his testimony, we're going to have Patty Ruskin return, and we'll also have Tom Carmen. Tom Carmen is our landscape architect, who also testified about the amenity. So perhaps we could have Mr. Carmen come back and answer that question?
Mr. Frigieri, is that okay with you?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a question to me. I apologize. I was sort of an open-ended, I think, pushing up against impervious material. And yes, of course, as long as we do that, it will.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So, Mr. Tom Balakian, if you could have your landscape architect testify a little bit more. You know, we are only talking about three percent. If there's a way that we could get you under the variance, I think we'd really love to see that, but certainly your testimony would be influential in that.
Okay. You know, since we're on this topic.
Chairman, I think it would be helpful for the board to understand that the increase in impervious, now, we've walked through this. To get to the seventy percent of impervious coverage, we would have to reduce the impervious coverage by more than six thousand square feet. You know, so, for example, the courtyard paving is forty-six hundred square feet. The wood decking is eighteen hundred square feet. The pool is a thousand. The patios are about twenty-eight hundred. The synthetic turf is two thousand, four, two thousand and forty. So we'd be loathe to remove any of those, really, to get us closer to the seventy percent, since they are critical amenities that, you know, since the stormwater is handled, even with this increased light, increase in impervious, the detriment is to lose an amenity that, for the residents here, that I think is asking, is probably too much for us to do and have an amenity package that's, you know, worthy of the residents that are going to live there.
All right. Mr. Golden, I appreciate your testimony on that matter. It's something we'll certainly consider. And I also appreciate you adding the scope element to that. I was trying to figure out what three percent of five acres came to. So I guess we have that number at about six thousand square feet, roughly.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other planning board members with questions for Mr. Golden?
I have a question.
I heard Mr. G. Piero.
Yeah, this may be the right time, since Mr. Golden is the planner right for MacCalli. I want to talk about sixteen thirty-three. That's appropriate with Mr. Golden, right?
Of course.
The question, Councilman, whether it's me or Mr. Tom Balakian would be able to answer it, hopefully. So if you can ask a question, we'll see who can answer it for you.
Okay, I have several items. Number one, I'd like a new drawing to show that you're going to remove all improvements on sixteen thirty-three, including surface parking. I'd like a drawing to show that. Your last drawing said that you haven't made up your mind what to do with the property.
There is a drawing in the site plan set that shows what improvements on sixteen thirty-three would be removed to provide the reduction in impervious coverage. Ms. Ruskin might be able to tell you exactly what sheet, but that there is a drawing in the site plan set that shows what improvements are to be removed.
I just want to make sure it includes the surface parking as well as the structure. The other item I have is buffering. There are residential areas and entire residential neighborhood right across the street. And we have discussed evergreens, eight to ten foot high, along the entire length of that property, so that the residents in Central Field are not confronted with your parking lot and your building. I'd like that to show on the plan also.
Steve, that'd be better addressed by you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. G. Piero, if I understand it, the way the plans are currently designed, it assumes that the building and some of the impervious surfaces on sixteen thirty-three will be removed for purposes of making the storm sewer system work. So that is, Patty Ruskin is going to be testifying to that momentarily. Now, that all assumes that sixteen thirty-three is going to be purchased and converted to a park, so you don't need a building there. You need green surfaces, so we understand that. So the way the application is presented, it assumes that that building and impervious will be removed. We will, of course, look into whether additional impervious on sixteen thirty-three that no longer serves any purpose can be removed to improve that situation as well. But what I take from Mr. the Councilman's question is that, assuming we all goes according to plan and that the office building at sixteen thirty-three is removed, so he would like to see a row of evergreen, an evergreen buffer planted very close to, along Littleton Road, for lack of a better word, to provide the maximum screening, visual screening of everything that's behind those evergreens, including the former sixteen thirty-three building lot, as well as the new apartment building going up on Two Campus.
Oh, I would like the evergreens to be placed right next to your property.
That's something, Councilman, I think that, for purposes of maximum screening, and we can have Tom Carmen talk about this momentarily, is that you'd get a much better visual screen if the trees are brought closer to Littleton rather than pushing them in.
No.
If.
Listen, you're new here on this issue. Back when the council was deciding to change the zoning to allow these apartment complexes and as a part of the affordable housing requirements that the court imposed upon us, our discussions with MacCalli, okay, was that, you know, that MacCalli would work with the township on helping us purchase that property. And that evergreens would be placed along your property line in the back to buffer. The residents in Central Field would like to see the park. We don't need to buffer the park.
Okay, that being said, I.
Do need to buffer your property and your parking lot, so they don't see that.
Very good. So, Councilman, if I can suggest, Tom Carmen is going to be returning to testify, and I'd ask him to answer that question and provide some solutions that do exactly as you're suggesting in terms of not screening the park, but screening the two-campus apartment building and parking.
Right.
Okay, he'll provide that testimony.
Now, just one more comment, just like I say. When, when MacCalli promised to work with the township on us acquiring that property, when they said they would work with us, we trusted them, and we had every confidence that they would work with us. The prices I am hearing now for what they want us to pay for it is out of our reach. So they're not really working with us, and I have the impression they're reneging on their commitment. I just want to make that known for the record.
Councilman, I think, although I would rather not get into the specifics of the negotiation.
I just wanted, I just wanted that on the record.
I do believe that there's been some movement on that issue, and I do think the township, when there's further discussions resuming tomorrow, I believe, the township is going to more like what they're hearing, what they hear tomorrow. I don't want to give specifics, but that issue is being addressed.
Thank you. I'll look forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, if I can follow up with the Councilman's point. I was going to raise it. I wasn't sure which witness, but I think now is a good time as well. You know, to Councilman DePiero on removing, I think you're asking for all of the improvements currently on sixteen thirty-three to be removed. The building and parking that the applicant has previously indicated would be removed, as well as all of the surface parking. I think there's a reason for that in terms of stormwater and the park-like setting, but there's also kind of a zoning question. So I think maybe it's an appropriate time for Mr. Golden to answer, is that if the building is coming down, then that parking lot no longer serves anything. Parking is an accessory use to a principal building, which will no longer exist. I'm not clear that the parking lot can stay in terms of zoning compliance. So it's yet another reason to remove all of the improvements on sixteen thirty-three.
Ms. Vivate, the most, we can find out, the engineer may be able to touch base on this. The amount of parking that was going to, quote-unquote, be left is very de minimis. So if the board so desires that no parking be provided for people who may want to park there and visit the park, that's the board's prerogative. I don't have an issue with that. We left that there just in the sense for the board to consider whether they would want some parking for people who might want to come and visit. If they want no impervious surface, i.e. building or parking there, that's within, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
That's what we want.
I believe, based on the recommendation of Ms. Vivate, we should include that the property, sixteen thirty-three Littleton, have all of its improvements removed as part of the resolution then. Certainly, we'll review those points of the resolution before we make our final motion.
Do I know, Chairman?
When you talk, when you talk about the improvements, you're talking about impervious improvements at surface, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's Andrew Cangiano.
Yes, Mr. Cangiano.
Wanted to follow up on that, and I think this, we have to continue this discussion, maybe better continued with the engineer Patty Ruskin. But there are a few more detailing items with that in regard to the improvements, regard to what the existing or the current proposed plans show. For example, the demolition plan does not show any demolition on the sixteen thirty-three lot. That plan needs to be revised to show that the buildings are coming down, and now that the remaining parking is coming out. And to the same point that arose the last hearing, this sixteen thirty-three, since the stormwater management system for this project, this application, is relying on a reduction in impervious coverage on sixteen thirty-three, and since the future use of that project is not written in stone yet, I recommend that, continue to recommend, that a deed restriction, stormwater easement. that, continue to recommend that a deed restriction, stormwater easement be placed on that 1633 lot that limits the impervious coverage to, I think they were going to have .44 acres remaining, so that would be the maximum amount of impervious coverage that could be installed on that lot because that's how they modeled their stormwater management measures, that there would be only .44 acres of impervious surface remaining on that lot. So again, I think that the condition would have to be that there'd be a deed restriction, stormwater-type easement on the 1633 property.
And Mr. Cagiano, those impervious improvements would be dedicated to the stormwater management? Is that how?
Well, the application and the stormwater plan makes, relies on the removal of impervious surface to make their system work. So we need to have that sort of recorded at the county for future purposes, however this is going to be developed, either as something that may be dedicated to the township or something that's going to be, you know, reused in the private sector. So it needs to be, I think, permanently recorded, and if that restriction is to be lifted, they would have to, I would suggest, would have to submit a revised stormwater management plan addressing that so that we're not overtaxing this current proposed design. So again, their plan relies on the removal of the impervious surface on 1633.
Okay. Mr. Carlson, do you have everything you need for Mr. Cagiano on that?
Yes, I do, I'm working on it right now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
Yeah, for Mr. Golden, I think you're the right person. I raised it at the previous meeting about the lack of EV charging stations. You raised the point of how you were trying to go along with our long-range plan for the municipality, and under section 3.4, it states we should consider parking regulations that encourage or potentially require these facilities for the construction of large-scale projects such as mixed-use developments, which I believe you are, multifamily developments, and office campuses. Going along also where you state you want to have all these nice amenities for the residents, I would believe that you'd want to include EV charging stations. And I'm somewhat bewildered as to why this statement was made last time. Well, we'll put them in later. Well, everything I know is to put in later would cost you significantly more than putting it in during construction. I pass it to you, Mr. Golden.
That point had been raised at the last meeting, and it had been discussed internally and as part of our plans. We had discussed this, I think I had raised this with both Susan and Andrew, if not, I apologize. We are committing to putting in two EV stations initially with the ability, assuming there is demand, to extend that because, as I mentioned, I think we mentioned last time, we're not seeing the demand in the facilities that we own and operate for it, but we are willing to put two in now with the ability to extend them to additional spaces if it's demanded. So we are agreeing to do that. We are also party, a part of the plan, agreeing to put in two spaces for the Uber, the DoorDash, the Amazon vans that would be signed for that use. And I think I mentioned earlier, I think Andrew had mentioned it, we had worked out a scheme with, both Andrew and Susan had seen, to provide a dedicated space for the larger UPS/FedEx truck. So I think we've addressed them as best we can at this point, and I trust that the board will be satisfied with those additions.
Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Chairman, are there any other questions for Mr. Golden? Again, we do want to bring on both Patty Ruskin, our civil engineer who you interviewed two weeks ago, as well as Tom Carmen to just further elaborate on the revision to the amenity package.
Any other board members with questions for our planner?
Mr. Chairman?
The planner, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Mealy.
A question about demolition, a timeline, where the debris would be trafficked out of that area, would it go down south to Route 10 and not north to Route 80 to a relatively residential area on Route 10, or rather on Littleton Road? Just a question about that.
At this point, I couldn't give you any definitive timetable since that's subject to the negotiations with the township on the purchase of the property for a potential park. So again, maybe we, Steve, maybe we'll have additional information on that as our discussions go along, but I couldn't give you an answer right now, sir. Regarding the removal, we will need a major soil-moving permit for a project like this, which goes in front of the town council, which describes what is being taken out, what's being taken in, and the routes that are provided, which has to be approved both by the township engineer as well as the town council. So I don't have those answers just yet, but the engineer, county engineer, and the town council will both have to review and approve the major soil-moving permit that would go with this project that would address those issues.
I believe the Morris County Planning Board would also be involved as far as soil moving.
Right, we have submitted to county site plan last week, so any issues that relate to the use of the county roads, county drainage, county traffic, we would address as part of county site plan approval.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, following up on Mr. Mealy's comment, if the removal of, be it soil or construction debris, is heading north on 202, there should be a restriction on the hours because of the schools located along 202. I don't know if we put that in our resolution or not.
I'd go one step further, Mr. Mandell, and suggest that no debris should go up 202.
That's fine by me.
If I can interrupt you for a minute. When that soil-moving permit comes before the town council, I'm sure the council will require them to go down Campus Drive to Dryden Way and get onto 10 and 287 and move in that direction and not on 202. We would require that on the council.
Well, that's why I'm glad we have you here, Mr. D. Piero. All right, any other questions for the planner? I'll turn it over to Mr. Tom Balacki and then, your next witness, sir?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to call back Patty Ruskin, our civil engineer.
Good evening.
Welcome back, Patty. Patty, you acknowledged you were sworn in on the 11th and that you will remain under oath this evening?
Yes.
Okay, previously qualified, so now you've heard some of the issues that were raised this evening, but before we get into the point-by-point, I would like you to give the board the benefit of an overview of how the stormwater system works in terms of flowing from 1633 down to two campus down to four campus so that they understand the dynamic and how these three properties work together.
Sure, I don't know if, I'll just do a description, and if we need to, I will have to have Tom share his screen, Tom Carmen share his screen. But for the most part, 1633, if you can picture that, would be basically on the west side, four campus on the east side. In front of 1633, on the frontage of Campus Drive, in front of two campus and in front of four campus are open detention basins. The 1633 detention basin, for the most part, takes runoff from the surrounding streets. And 1633 is runoff from 1633 is collected in storm sewer systems and run through to the two-campus parcel and into the detention basin located in the, on the frontage of Campus Drive in front of two campus.
Excuse me, Ms. Ruskin and Chairman, can I interrupt for a second? I think it would be much better, sir, if you put the exhibit up.
So, Tom Carmen, if you can hear me, can you please put up the Patty's civil engineering exhibit that shows the drainage?
I think he has to, you have to be given, you have access, Tom? Oh, great.
There we go. Okay, does everybody see this image?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so on the, we'll use this as the, I think it might be slide number five? Oh, no, this is, this is the newest plan, right, that I just sent to you tonight, Tom? It's not part of the deck.
Would you like me to go back to last week's deck?
I think so, I think that would be better because they've seen that before. So if you go to the colored site plan, I think that, let's see how that, that would be probably the best. So 1633 is on the left side of this image, and this is slide number four, and I think it's exhibit A1. This is the colored site plan that I'm referencing. So the runoff from Littleton Road as well as Campus Drive for the most part, and a very small portion of 1633 drains into the existing detention basin located on the frontage of Campus Drive on 1633 property. The majority of 1633, the impervious coverage, the lawn areas, all drain through storm sewer collection system into the existing detention basin on two-campus drive. So 1633 basin drained via pipe, a culvert pipe that connects it under the shared driveway between 1633 and two campus. And then the detention basin that's on two campus continues to flow in the eastern direction under the existing two driveways, the easternmost driveway on two campus and the fourth-campus driveway into another detention basin. And that's how this whole campus is set up. We call it the campus-wide stormwater management system, the system of what was referred to in the past as ribbon ponds, it's not, they're not ponds, they're actually basins, they're dry normally except during rain events, and ultimately drain to the further east, to the eastern side of Dryden Way, where there's the central wetland area of the Matt Kelly Business Campus. So the runoff from two campus also drains into the existing detention basin on two campus. In the proposed condition, we maintain those same drainage patterns with 1633 draining into the modified detention basin located at the frontage of two campus, and the majority of new two-campus project being collected via the three subsurface detention basins that I described to you two weeks ago, located on the west, on the south, and the east side of the proposed building below the parking areas. So altogether, they continue to work together, the drainage patterns are the same, it's just that on the 1633 project site, with the demolition of the building and the majority of the parking area, it still drains towards two campus, but there is a reduction in impervious coverage, of course, because we're reducing the impervious on 1633 with the slight increase of impervious on two campus in the proposed condition. If you looked, if you were to refer to the proposed drainage area map, that's the last sheet in the site plan set, you would see that there's the southernmost parking area on 1633. It's approximately 40 spaces that we had originally kept and maintained, as Mr. Golden had explained, that perhaps the township would like to have it. If there is a park there, that parking is already constructed, but if the township prefers it to be removed, then that, then there'd be basically no impervious coverage on 1633.
Patty, I have a question for you. If that does become, if 1633 does become a park for the township, what we've asked for is for that entire tract to be all grass. And which means you'd have very little drainage, it would go into the ground.
It would go into the ground for the smaller storm events. A larger storm event would still need to be collected.
Some overflow, okay, so for the most part, though, it would relieve your detention basins for most of the time, unless it's a hurricane or something.
Correct, I mean, the detention system and detention stormwater system has been designed to even have that runoff from the lawn areas drain into the system, so they've been sized to accommodate that larger storm event.
Okay.
Patty, unless you have additional testimony regarding the, you know, how the stormwater system works, can you, if Mr. Tom Carmen can zoom in a little bit, or maybe go to the new exhibit to show the additional changes that were made with respect, at the request of the fire department with respect to circulation, as well as show those dedicated Ubers, Grubhub, whatever you call those things, spaces?
Sure. So we'll look at this exhibit here on the screen, which is the colored site plan, and on the southwestern corner of the, near the lobby, there's a full-nose island, island at the corner, it's in green. What we're proposing to do at that location is place the UPS/FedEx truck a little bit larger of an area, and we can put that up on the screen. That would accommodate that larger FedEx, and so that truck could come in. Thank you, Tom. Now, what you're seeing is an exhibit, and I'm not sure, Mr.-
I believe we have to mark this exhibit.
This is-
This one up to-
This one's, it really is just a sketch, so it doesn't have a name, unfortunately. It was just something that we've been working on to see if it could work, but it's a site plan that's in the set of plans with a modification to the western side of the parking area. And so what you see on the screen here is a striped-out area, it's 12 feet wide by 31.5 feet long. It's at the southwestern corner of the building, and that could accommodate the larger FedEx/UPS-type vehicles that could come in off of Campus Drive, pull into the, to this area, jump out of the truck, deliver their packages, and then come back and either back out and turn down the front parking lot if traffic allows, or just pull back out and circle around the development to leave the site. What we did here, too, is we looked at, there's, you know, competing need for those three extra spaces that Mr. Golden mentioned earlier. So there are some spaces that are needed to accommodate the fire department's comments on having access to and in the vicinity of the courtyards so that needed to, they could pull their fire truck up and, you know, run the hoods and access directly into the courtyard. So with the modifications that would need to be made for the fire department, these modify, this modification here at the corner for the loading area, if you call, if you want to call it that in the front, and some modifications along the southern parking lot to move around some of the islands, make them a little bit smaller, we believe that, you know, we've addressed the, these individual comments and still provided the RSIS compliant number of parking spaces. RSIS compliant number of parking spaces.
Ms. Ruskin and Susan Vavadi Planner, so with, with those proposed changes and the reductions in the islands, what does that do to the overall impervious coverage now?
It, it will be, it's really going to be very minimal, it would be basically three, the, the three parking spaces is reconfigured, so, you know, we have, I wouldn't say we have more impervious or less impervious between that and the modifications that Mr. Golden was talking about with the, with the patios, it, it's very minor.
It's because you, you've essentially already had three spaces that you were counting, and you're trying to bring those, okay, got it.
Oh, this is Andrew Candiano, Patty, just to be clear, so what is, with this sketch and taking into account the parking changes for the fire department needs, what is your total proposed parking count?
The total count, give me one second, would be three hundred and thirty spaces.
And what is required by RSIS?
Three hundred and thirty spaces.
So you, you've managed to kind of tweak and move and provide both the fire department needs and this delivery vehicle loading, or drop-off area with only a reduction of three spaces?
That's correct. Now, this sketch that you see in front of you really does not show, you know, we had done a numerous, a couple different scenarios, but at the end of the day, we do need to show an island right in front, somewhere in front of the courtyards, both of the open courtyards, for the fire department, but as a total, we can meet the, meet the, the parking number. So I wouldn't want to say that this, if you see this sketch and we were to zoom in, you're not going to see those islands there, because it was a different calculation that we did. So this really is just meant for the, that service area on the corner.
All right. So you're, you're confident that, looking at this, you can resubmit a full revised plan and provide the Amazon drop-off area and the fire department needs and still maintain the three hundred and thirty parking spaces, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Ms. Ruskin, I just wanted you to clarify something, and maybe it was covered in your testimony last time. On, on the western edge of the property, we had just talked about removing all of the improvements to the property, but I just wanted to make clear, is any part of the, of the paved space for, for driving on the, on the other property to your west?
Excellent question, because you are correct. There is, if we, if we go back to, you can see it on this colored plan, it's in, it's in a lighter shade of gray, but there is an easement that is the shared driveway easement between sixteen thirty-three and Two Campus. So that will need to stay, because that is where the cars need to access the site through that easement that will still remain on the sixteen thirty-three property.
And for my benefit, could you just, is it a two-way flow of traffic around the whole property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
I just have one more comment on this, just for clarification for the board. So Patty, if you zoomed out a little bit on this exhibit and got the full lot of the sixteen thirty-three property, and that was a very good point with the driveway paving that needs to remain, I think for clarity, everything that's not shaded at all on the sixteen thirty-three property, this board is, is asking that, or get, asking for confirmation and asking for the plans to be updated to show all those impervious, prove it's the parking lot, the driveway circulations, the tennis court, the building, that will all be removed as part of this application, is that correct?
If the board so desires, yes, that's correct.
All right, and again, just, just to be clear, the current plans don't show that, they don't clearly show the building being removed and the tennis courts and the like, so just to be clear, your sheet C4, which is your demo sheet, should be updated to clearly show the demolition of those improvements, just like they show the demolition of the improvements on Two Campus.
Understood.
Yep, okay, thanks.
If I may add to that, I would also like it to show the evergreen buffers that would go along that property line.
Yes, and the landscape plans updated accordingly.
And the buffer goes along Mac Kelly property, not the Littleton roadside.
That actually counts, when that looks like that, it's just physically not possible, unless you were to reduce, because of the shared driveway, the, I don't know, maybe Tom Carmen, when he testifies momentarily, he can describe where that, where that evergreen buffer would go, but I just don't see how that could be accommodated in Thomas' design.
I'll share with you, when the council was discussing this with Mac Kelly, before we changed the zoning to allow this whole project to happen, okay, what we had discussed was the, the, the evergreens would go on our property, what would, we anticipated would be our property, so you'd plant them, it'd be all buffers all the way along there, but they would be on our property, not to take away your parking spaces on your side.
Correct, so it would be along the, the shared border immediately adjacent to the shared driveway, correct? And Tom Carmen will testify to that momentarily.
Okay, I'd like to see that in a drawing, too.
Of course.
Any other questions for Ms. Ruskin, our engineer witness? Okay, Mr. Tom Balakian?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Patty. Okay, I'd like to call, recall my next witness, Tom Carmen, who is the landscape architect who was previously sworn and qualified and testified two weeks ago. So, welcome back, Tom.
Good evening.
Now, Tom, you, you do acknowledge you remain under oath this evening?
I do, yes.
Thank you. Okay, now, since the issue, let's talk about the issue that we just discussed while it's fresh in everybody's minds, you heard the councilman's comments and suggestions regarding the removal of the impervious on sixteen thirty-three and planting an evergreen stream. Can you describe if that's possible, how that's possible, how you can accommodate that request?
Sure, so, so the, the image that we're looking at right here, right, this has now been rotated, and sixteen thirty-three is towards the bottom of the sheet, and I'm just going to zoom in there a little bit further, and as, as we were looking on the last exhibit, you were seeing how the curb line comes along existing curb line, and that curb line would continue even once the improvements on sixteen thirty-three would be demolished. It's, it's a shared roadway in that there's the easement, so, so part of that is happening on the sixteen thirty-three side, so there will be some asphalt, but directly adjacent to that, we would be happy to work with the town to come up with a buffer that would essentially provide screening of the, the parking to a potential future park. As indicated, the buffer along this area on the sixteen thirty-three side would, would buffer the parking, as opposed to if we put the buffering along Littleton, it would really buffer the park from, or sixteen thirty-three from Littleton. So we understand the goal, the goal being to, to create a, a buffer to the parking.
That would also provide your courtyards and your residents in your apartment, I don't think they would want people looking in at them from Littleton Road, they would have no privacy. Those evergreens would also be buffering your residents from, from Littleton Road also.
It would be, it would be. Yeah, so we can, we can show that on an, on a plan update, where we would show that any of the demoed hardscape building would be stabilized with feeding, with, with lawn soil erosion protection, and then we would, we could show the, the evergreen screen as well.
Mr. Carmen? I, I'm assuming that once you put those evergreens as the screen, there'd be breaks or a break to allow entryway into the park off of the shared driveway, am I correct?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, I, I, again, we can, we can work with the township related to that, to that buffering, as we're, as the buffering shows on the, the left side of this plan, right, often we, we stagger the buffer and we create, we create some breaks, some interest in it, where it's not just a continuous wall, so it has a much more natural look to it when it is installed at the beginning. So the, the one other item that was, was discussed, if I could, is related to the pervious And within, within the courtyard, there, what, what we've done is the bocce court itself is a synthetic turf, and so synthetic turf like a, like a soccer field, it's, we've used it on, on a number of other residential buildings like this, and what it does is it's, it's very good in terms of the play surface as well as the maintenance. So that is, in fact, what the, the bocce court is, bocce court is twelve by sixty, it's seven hundred and twenty square feet, and then you're also seeing some areas that are a darker brown, and those are like an engraide decking. And what we've done is we've used the synthetic turf and the engraide decking to, to, to best manage the stormwater. The, in some municipalities, in some situations, synthetic turf and wood decking is considered pervious, because it does allow water to perk through. But having said that, on, on big storm events, right, it is underdrained, so that way there is not a, a problem during those big storm events. So we do think that we're, we're kind of using best practices to, to do what we can in terms of creating some, some, in theory, pervious surfaces, however, they just, based on calculations, the township does not consider them pervious.
Then, Tom, can you also confirm that in the amenities package, that those additional patio spaces are being provided toward the several COE units?
We, we will be doing that, yep, we can adjust the, we can adjust the amenity layout to provide those, those patio spaces at those COE units engraide, and we will update the plan to reflect that.
I have no further questions from Mr. Carmen.
One more question for, for me, and maybe it refers, maybe Ms. Ruskin is the more appropriate, but in terms of the draining, I believe the testimony was that all of the draining from these properties does go back to the wetlands as opposed to our sewage system, is that correct?
Yeah, nothing goes, when you say sewage system, nothing goes to the sanitary sewer system, that's for certain. But with, where the, the wetlands, if you go down the hill, Campus Drive, cross Dryden, before you get to Tiffany's, that's all wetland there, and that's where the stormwater currently goes and will continue to go.
So, so it would return to the groundwater nearby?
It should, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just want one more comment or clarification, or just for the board's, I guess, opinion on this. We have, we're talking about the existing parking lot that was going to be remaining, and, and Mr. Carmen, if you could point to where that existing parking lot curb cut is on that, yeah, right there, I think, my opinion should leave, if not pavement, at least that curb cut there and some gravel for some maintenance of the detention basin and, and access to that park at a minimum, you know, and future use or future development of that park in, in any way can be, you can change that, but at least it, it provides a pull-off area if, for, for maintaining of the grass, for, for maintaining of the detention basin of any kind of vehicle, either, either by the applicant or in the future, if it's going to be that way, or by the township. But I, I, I suggest leaving that opening there and maybe a small gravel area for maintenance for a vehicle to go in there and maintain that sixteen thirty-three property.
I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. DPR, do you have any, any objections to that recommendation?
No, no, I do not.
Okay.
That's perfectly acceptable to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dinsmore?
A, a simple question, maybe it's been answered before, are pets going to be allowed in this facility?
Is that a Tom Golden question or a Tom Carmen question?
I'm not sure who the.
Depends on the answer.
I, I, I do know, this is Tom Carmen, I, I do know that, that often Roseland Residential does have pet-friendly buildings, I don't know for certain if this in fact is one, but, but often they are.
I'm just, I'm just thinking in terms of the layout of the land, if you do end up with a significant number of pets, I know that, that the target audience you seem to be aiming at seems to have fallen in love with the dogs at this point, and it, it just would be useful to make sure that there's, but the amount of spacing you have here, if, if everybody has a dog, might be a little tight, but given, given the park next door, there's room to run.
Mr. Dinsmore, might it also be appropriate to ask about bag dispensers or any such equipment for dealing with their waste?
Well, I would think that if they're going to allow pets, they would probably have to do something along those lines, or at least provide some sort of system where that would be readily available.
Sure, so.
It, it may be to require that the pet owner have a bag disposal, you know, a system that they, they have access to, but you could also make your residents happier by having disposal systems readily available.
Yeah, so on other properties that we have worked with Roseland on, if they do in fact allow pets, they have, you know, guidelines related to breeds that are allowed and, and sizes of dogs, and then they also do, like along the sidewalk around the, the building, they would put bag dispensers along there and the appropriate waste receptacles as well.
So you're, you're agreeing that if you do decide to allow pets, you'll, you'll have appropriate infrastructure for taking care of the things that go along with having those pets?
Yes, we could do that, we could do that along the, the perimeter walkway, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? For the, for the landscape engineer? Okay, Mr. Tom Balakian, I believe we finished our questions for this witness?
Yes, we have, and that actually, with the conclusion of Mr. Carmen's recall, completes the direct portion of the case.
Okay.
So, since the, I know the, the public has been very patient, but we do have, all of our witnesses are here, and unless the board would like to ask, themselves ask questions of these witnesses, well, here's the, we give the public opportunity.
Excellent. So with that in mind, I would love to open up the public portion of this meeting for the purpose of asking questions of these witnesses, just to clarify for the public that questions relate to anything you didn't understand about the development or anything that maybe you wanted clarification on, you should not include your opinions or, or statements at this time. Uh, you should not include, uh, your opinions or, or statements at this time. We do, somebody who's creating a bit of noise in the background, I hope that's not me. Can we make sure others are muted? Okay. Um, so if you have a statement you would like to ask, that will be in the section immediately, uh, following this. If you have a question, uh, we'll be glad to take it at this time. Um, if you have more than one question, I'm just going to ask that you keep it to two questions and then get back online to, to allow others to, uh, contribute to the conversation as well. All right, so with that said, it looks like we have somebody with their hand raised, Mr. Homiak. Mr. Homiak, could you please give your, yes, could you please give your name and address for the record?
Uh, Nicholas Homiak, 26 Oneida Avenue, uh, Lake Hiawatha. Uh, I heard a lot of talk about impervious surface and I didn't hear anything about the pervious asphalt that is available to, uh, developers now. It takes the water and puts it, uh, right, uh, in the ground. And, uh, most stormwater basins are really not maintained. And, uh, all runoff and you have a wetland there. And, uh, I would just like to know what guarantee we have that these, uh, engineering, uh, substitute for groundwater recharge are actually going to be, uh, kept up? So why is there no proposal for, uh, a more, uh, upgraded form of asphalt, pervious asphalt? And what exactly is the deal with the, uh, maintenance? And like I said, most maintenance is like a forgotten thing. And if you give it to a private, uh, entity, they're most likely going to cut, uh, corners. So, um, I don't know if the other question I have is appropriate, but, uh, can I, uh?
Maybe we should get you an answer on your first question?
Okay, go ahead.
So we're looking for Patty Ruskin to answer that question regarding stormwater maintenance and the concept of pervious pavement?
Um, as part of the project, we submitted an, an O and M manual, operations and maintenance manual associated with the stormwater management improvements.
get manually described, it's required, provides checklist, it provides detail on timing for all the different maintenance for the entire stormwater system and the ground, which are associated with these products. It includes the manual and the checklist to be filled out and actually it can be enforced by the township and has generally collected and at least we have a recording requirement and have Mr. Ken Jenep talk about it, but the township does have a recording requirement to the New Jersey environmental protection for for the township as a whole and each project we need to do. So this grab there is a specific maintenance outline and chart that are to be followed for any changes.
And this is, this is trying to turn off your.
No.
Okay.
The association, homeowners association of the owner, depending on the type of project, will be responsible for hiring the maintenance personnel and also to do these inspections that are required from different times of year for the system.
Mr. Home, I have a second question. Can you just explain to the board, is this place being used to produce maintenance or are you going to be here or you use to inhabit the division system, inhabit the system like that?
Correct. There is force statement in other materials. It's considered imperative, it's imperative to go towards the appropriate calculation. But in the north state area, it is important to maintain a poor statement or a good statement. There's a very, there's a lot of maintenance that goes along with that. But the argument that takes into consideration is the runoff from the pavement into a sub- base of the water that is sown. And so the grease is the salt and the zebri and shook that stone so no longer than it is the herpes. To be remembered, a herpes statement to maintain some buildings and allowing the water to flow. You still don't need to have a backup to that. You would need to have a system where you can overflow the water for a purpose statement. So to look at it as an option for this, this site, it really was not in the overall scheme of the project or anything that we wanted to do on a large basis or something like that.
We believe that the magic will increase the water deficit that precipitates now a predicament of, I believe even if there were a year or minus five point two nine six eight one seven nine seven five gallons per day. So this may be a whole lot of the deficits surrounding act or wells in the area.
Well, actually, the fact because we reduce the average as a whole, that the removal of the purpose average on sixteen thirty is actually increasing the ability for water to charge back to the wells.
And where is there is well rate protection area here to this degree?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, Mr. Home, uh, I have a question. Is the question or is it a question?
A question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Click this. Um, what? There's to be began the Highlands' control and why can't this project be referred to the Highland referral portal for support and the Highland Council would be the final authority in this role, especially in these stormwater disaster. So it does necessarily have the Highlands' control of this influence.
Because I cannot answer that. The Highlands' requirements that Mr. Home has referred to has not yet been adopted by the town to accept. Therefore, for this application, it doesn't submit it and it's incomplete prior to the option of ordinance, it's not subject to plans.
So even though we're in the Highlands, we can refer this project?
Not until.
Well, the referral ordinance is for, for your, before the ordinance is filled out. You can, you don't have a Highlands for a, that's good to refer, the ordinance is for.
But the. The reference is not going to adopt the very further mechanism to refer to the Highlands.
Okay.
And what?
Is that helping? If you use up your directions, you're just holding to.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate you cooperating. All right. I see. Uh, I'm hoping to, Lord, uh, the last.
What?
We've got.
Oh, hi. Yeah, this is another voice, uh, for traffic. And question I'd like to ask, uh, this is a traffic engineer. This is a rubbish actually got some market concerns because tools for the position we live on or live here goes from we're talking in those disciplines without a problem. And if any traffic study, I can have to vote for it. And this is what tools are. If anybody has kids that are sick that are at the, in this new context, they get the north side to serve it into congestion. And right now, it's like you mentioned before, it's ridiculous. And you're just getting traffic in here. I'm just presenting these ideas. And just always play video of these things and the traffic has to pretend they're not going to take these things. I'm through to go across ten. It's good to say it that way. So, you know, anything, you think, you know, think of the, I'd like to know if engineers took the, the school traffic into consideration.
We did, we had a traffic council as an exception. So that's clear. We did these, we didn't not extend this to the halls or farther to the market. It's only a portion of this traffic we run, right? You have to start going towards the stuff. It's less than half of the, the, that we say. And you can't even mind if this project is a, this is an off ability, you can back it as an off ability, you can generate more traffic than we're building. So I can, when you're concerned of the, the, to, to, it's not going to get better, but it's not going to get worse, that's right.
They tweak the light and yeah, our street wave is now on the traffic is normal and even pandemic, it's bad. There can be lights, so, so, you know, you can take our, our full consideration here, you know. And I think sitting here, did you do this, that, or, 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 the track goes up maybe a lot of people were using this new complex. This will be going up today. I still think either this, somebody's on that. It doesn't dissipate. We know where the traffic is and it does.
We didn't look at our track, this is, this project, not all of those ones. It will be less, less.
All right. I disagree, but.
All right. The second question to Lord, when you live in there twenty years ago, but now go from twenty years. Maybe everything about the city, when you have these apartments and they hope to attack, but in that each apartment has to be back for us? What's the, what's the town, all the issues that were being used and how is that handled? Is it a, or is it going to be, you have to be for individual houses? How is that fee going to be managed? Because at times some, two of them will be extra due to what have been used.
I guess. I, I think it's probably, I think it's, I think it's.
I'm not familiar with the connection fees, it's more specific than anything, but typically it's based on units and that's true. Problem is bad because I'm sure that's fine, just calculation for spell property because two ends up being sizable fees for connection fees for both work or residential properties, maybe the best thing on that.
It has, uh, the, you, you've been touched with, uh, water, which is always, so for projects like this, they need water connection. It's, it's, um, for what they call a, like, units. It's a fee of two hours, like, three minutes. So then. So. If the. These are. This. Is. Or. The. Of the. Our. So. So it will be. With. Plans. With a tree. Which is. A. 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 Doors. Of the. Country.
Alright, this second question. Where is again with image? Second. Roof. Six degrees. The great. Can't fall down because all the. And. There's. Something was best. This is very also. It's. Glacier helps for reasons. The walls. And. Hotels. Into that area, which is by the range basis. You have all this. Connect. At. What they call a. Of. Porous, non-porous. I'll give you. Another. Other. This. Hurry this. Still. A lot of water. Go. And. That's. The. I'm sure. Town, it all. A lot. Of. It. Is. That. But. Um. Instead. Backup plan. If it is. Extra water. Down. I know sometimes they talk about. Your flood. Or. So. And that's. How. I. Be. But. It's be coming down. It's just something. The building to. It. And. Now. It's only. An effective. Water. To. Wash. The property. But that's not area. But. There's a lot of water that comes down. And. It's. A. That's all. And. By the way, they done. A. Fully. Thing.
It. 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 It.
Oh, just. You know. In this. State, you only get. Out of. Of. The year. Otherwise, it's just. There. The. The. She was playing. They have the glacier. Also. Like. And. On. Side. Of. The. DC. Up to. Two. J. Just. Just. Sorry. Things. A little too. Much. Here. If it doesn't. Right. That's. That's it.
Okay. Um. I see. Uh. JJ Cox.
I guess. I.
Yes. Please. If you're. Name. Address. For the. Record.
Sure. I'm. Actually. Did. You. And. What do you write? And my address. In Sherwood Road. More. Uh. One. Um. My question is. Uh. I'm. 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 Still. Wondering. Is it. A. Laugh. Um. I have. Try. Try. In. Safety. Right. They can. Serve. The. Safety. Of. The safety. Of. The. Hill. That. Is. It. Is. Uh. So. That. I'm studying. For the. Quality. Use. Of. This. Fifty three. If you're really sure. Just. The. Plus. This. Go. To. This. Building. In. Yours. Um. Team. I mean, I get. You. So. I'm. Sitting here. And. That. Um. And so. This is. Like. Traffic. Delete. I'm also. Worried. About. The. State. Is well. Used. For. It. Um. Children. Or. How. This. Is. Too. Early. What the school. Have. Uh. This. Little. Question. For. My. Question. Mark. Uh. Of. Street. Where. Family. Is. Law. Daily. There's nothing. About. Safety. Here. My question is. Have. Have. Safety. And. Have. The. Neighborhood. Basically.
We. We. Not. Look. I think. We're not changing. It. In. The. Year. But. Again. We're. Generally. Think. This. Property. Is. A. Last. Traffic. I think. It's. Not. Going. To. Tell. People. About. It. Let. Me. Think. March. On. The. Week. This.
No. One. Different. Time. People in the neighborhood. Are going. For. This. Like. This. Person. That's. A. Good. Thing. That. It's. Quick. That.
Okay. Uh. Do you have any other questions?
Um. My. Um. Questions. Um. Was. This. I. I don't know if this is. Actually. Like. A. That. That. We. Didn't. Change. But. Like. Can work with the. Township? We. Have. Our. Start. With. That. It. It. Easy. What does that mean? To a late person? Um. In terms of not having out of. Commitment. Um. I know. This. Um. This. Pretty scary. This. Thing. That. I only had. Tail. From the. Buckle. Bird. Was. Seem. To. To. Something. Maybe. His name was previously. Some. He worked with. The township. And so. He's. Doing. This. Because. He's. I'm. Really. You. 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 See. These. Crap. Something. Talking. To. Work. With. The. Meeting. Theater. What kind of. Threats. Is. My. Cap. Um. That. Only. Can. Work. On. My. Son. That. Insurance. Is. My. Cap. Have. Um. That. Only. Can. Get. Work. On. My. Son.
I'm. I'm. Sorry. Answer. For. You. I'm. Still. The. Entity. Of. Resolution. That. 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 Gets. Off. For. For. This. Probably. Put. In. Number. Of. Positions. And. With. This. Positions. Uh. The. The. Applicant. Would. Have. To. Uh. Oftentimes. See. The. Or. Um. Other. Members. Of the town. Uh. To. Their. Best. Passion. Uh. That being. Our town. Player. Like. Our. Four. Star. Um. The. Um. What. Is. Our. Situation. And. So. Those. Uh. Individuals. Would. Have. To. Keep. Their. Final. Um. Of. Before. That. I can. Just. That. That. Is. That. That. Is. That. That. Is. 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 Those. Uh. Individuals. Would. Have. To. Keep. Their. Final. Um. Of. Before. That. I can. Just. That. That. Is. 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 That.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh. Seeing. Uh. Uh. That. Is. Complete. All of the. People. Who. Have. Asked. Questions. Is. Yeah. Uh. How. Do you. Return. To. Do. And. If. You. Answer. Your. Question. Is. You could. Put. Your. Hand. At. the. Top. Of. The. Question. Is. You could. Put. Your. Hand. At. the. Top. Of. The. Question. Is. You could. Put. Your.